Adam, would you like to lead us in a prayer before we open the meeting?
Please pray with me. Father in heaven, your name is holy and sacred, and when we look at the heavens and the works of your hands, we are humbled by your power. Because if you could make a universe capable of such feats of strength and raw shows of power such as tornadoes that make our structures and our humble homes and even mighty trees crumble as but dust, then your power has to be beyond that even. And so in times when we consider how great you are, we have to rely on that. In times when we're fearful of what the night and the storms might bring or what they've brought, help us to remember that you are bigger than all of those things. You are stronger than that, and you do not let things happen unless somehow you can make good come out of it, even if we will not always know what that good is. Help us to trust in your promises and even look forward to a day in the future of great destruction, because it's a day of great renewal. A day that we look forward to with new heavens and a new earth where there will be no more mourning, or death, or crying, or pain, for the old order of things has passed away. And in the meantime, please be with us as we repair and rebuild and come together and weep with those who weep and stand with those who need someone to stand with and work together. I thank you for the showing of this great community that we've had over the past few days. And God, knowing that we need your help, I am knowing the day, I pray the traditional words of Saint Patrick, a slave who escaped but came back to share the gospel with his captors. He prayed, "Christ be all around us. Christ with me, Christ before me, Christ behind me, Christ in me, Christ beneath me, Christ above me, Christ on my right, Christ on my left, Christ when I lay down, Christ when I sit down, Christ when I arise, Christ in the heart of every man who thinks of me, Christ in the mouth of everyone who speaks of me, Christ in every eye that sees me, Christ in every ear that hears me. I arise today through the strength of heaven, the light of the sun, the radiance of the moon, the splendor of fire, the speed of lightning, the swiftness of wind, the depths of the sea, the stability of the earth, the firmness of rock. I arise today through God's strength to pilot me, God's might to uphold me, God's wisdom to guide me, God's eye to look before me, God's ear to hear me, God's word to speak for me, God's hand to guard me, and God's shield to protect me." I pray this for our city and for the city council meeting and for our neighbors, and I pray it in the name of Jesus my Christ. Amen.
Matt, would you lead us in a prayer?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We'd like to open the meeting. First item of business is a public hearing and to consider an ordinance approving the final plat of the Highlands.
Yes, before I get too far into this one, I probably should just let you know why we're here talking about a final plat. I guess one of the, we've gone through and we've looked at the preliminary plat for this development and a related PUD planning unit development that just kind of showed the layout. A preliminary plat in the PUD is sort of, here's what we plan to do. A final plat is after they've actually done all the engineering and all that stuff, and it's, here's what we're doing, basically. And at this stage, the review is pretty, the scope is pretty limited. It's basically, are they doing what they said they were going to do? And so we'll get into some details on that. And then we always had to bring final plats to the city council for consideration because at the end of the day, there's, so the city has to accept rights of way and easements as a part of this deal, and so you're authorizing the mayor to sign that plat to accept that at the end. But we have, when we changed the updates to the zoning code, one of the things that was changed was to add in a requirement for a public hearing. And part of that reason why is because, and this big development is kind of its nail in the head as to kind of why that was put into place, was when they do a preliminary plat, that plat is good for 10 years. And so as each of these phases come in, they'll be coming in with these final plats to plat that part of the phase, each phase. And so it's to let people know that something is coming, basically. So if you lived right next to that property, you know, you might not have been here when that was originally approved. So when something is eminently happening next to you, you would find out about it. So that's what this is all about. So I'm sure you remember the Highlands development that's off Highway 72 in Osage, basically. It was a big 135, I think, acre property, was rezoned to add a PUD overlay and then a preliminary plat over the whole thing. This red thing that just popped up, this is the area, this first phase that we're talking about. This is the preliminary plat that was approved, and this is, I've got the red line on there again to show this first phase, that's the portion of this preliminary plat that this is, this final plat is for. Some details that you might need to know, there was a minor subdivision for these two lots up in the corner there at Osage and Country Ridge, I think. It was a minor subdivision is administrative approvals. That does not come through planning and zoning, city council. We've looked at it, ready to approve it. It technically can't be approved until the improvements for that are in place. And so they're working on that. Once soon as there's sewer line that needs to be built to it, when that's done, that part will be able to be recorded. So that's not included with this particular plat. Then technically, this plat includes planning the entire 135 acre property except those other two lots I just talked about, because there's some easements that are being placed on it. As then future phases come in, they'll be replating essentially this big lot into the, all the smaller lots and common lots as it goes along. But the main focus is the area where the lots and the common areas are for this phase. This particular phase, it's 23 acres out of the 145 acre property. This is a total of 87 lots out of the about 587 that were, was planned. This phase includes two large areas that are common lots. It has things like drainage facilities, some utilities, and it'll have some of the onsite amenity areas. This part of the plat includes a portion of the Collector Road that was planned to go through the property, that they were calling it Heatherfield Drive. So this is the road that popped up with the dash lines. That is the one that will connect from Highway 72 through the property and then eventually through other properties on to the east to, you know, a long enough period of time all the way across town. The, this preliminary, this final plat is basically the same as the approved preliminary plat. There are some differences with some of the lot lines, it just kind of different directions, things like that. The main difference is this area that just popped up, there were lots that are basically, they were oriented in a different direction, and they were able, in this change, they were able to also squeeze an additional lot in there. Adding that additional lot is, we think that's, meets the minimum, it's significantly, significantly the same as what was approved in the past, and so we're not too worried about that. If they were adding, you know, a whole bunch of lots in there and changed the whole layout, then we'd be talking about, hey, this isn't what we agreed to. But this, this appears to be basically the same. Should point out, if you've driven out there, there's some stuff going on on the property. One of the first things you'll be seeing is a temporary sales office that'll be located off of Osage Drive. That's the area that circled up in a common lot area. That'll be there for about a year or so. And then one of the first things they're going to start building is this first cul-de-sac off of that Collector Road. And that cul-de-sac has a variety of different sizes, lots, and the intention is to have a variety of different model homes, basically, for development. And then those will become the, one of those will become a sales office once it's ready. This plat includes all the improvement plans necessary for this development, so water, sewer, streets, all that stuff. They've been reviewed and the plans have been approved. A portion of that will be required to extend water to the site. A sewer lift station is proposed, and so that's actually part of this phase. And all the needed utilities and streets and all that that's necessary for this phase. A traffic study has been done. That wasn't done when we, when the PUD was done, so that's been done at this time. It was, it's been reviewed by principally MoDOT is the ones who are most interested with, but the city was involved with the review. What it basically said is for this phase, everything's fine, but to go beyond that point, there'll be some need for some turning lanes on Highway 72 at this new Collector Road and at Osage Drive. So those will be done before, after this phase and before they do anything else. So just to summarize, this final plat complies with all the relevant zoning and subdivision requirements. It is in substantial conformance with the approved PUD and the preliminary plat, and the improvement plans that are related to this have been reviewed and approved. The Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at this and did recommend approval with a vote of five to zero. Do you have any questions for me?
Before we ask any questions, can we officially open a public hearing?
Forgot about that, sorry.
I forgot, too. Any questions for Tom? Okay, if there's no questions, we close the public hearing. Any? Oh, okay, that's what I just asked you. Is there anyone that would like to speak to city council regarding this PUD? Regardless of where you live?
My name's Christian Miller. I'm at 17415 North Outer 40 Road, Chesterfield, Missouri. I'm here representing the developer, so if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them, so.
You drove all the way down here. I feel compelled that we're going to have to ask you something.
I mean, you really don't have to. But I'm happy to answer, so.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You can pass along that in spite of Rala and the way we like our roundabouts, we're glad you're thinking about including one.
Good deal. I'll pass that on.
If there's no further questions, thank you for taking the time to come down here, making yourself available, and we wish you the very best with this project.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, first reading, please.
An ordinance to approve the final plat of Highlands, of the Highlands, Phase One.
Acknowledgement for special presentations, there are none on your agenda, but that was before Friday night, so we're going to make a couple of audibles here. First thing, we would like to have the school district, Dr. Dare and Gina, I can't see either of you, yes? Please give us an update.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us some time to share with you what's going on. Obviously, I want to start by saying what an amazing community we live in. These last few days have shown that, and I know everybody's seen that, but we've been contacted by literally dozens of entities and individuals offering assistance in every form and fashion, and it's greatly appreciated, so I want to acknowledge that. I thought I would just give you a little rundown of kind of the major damage that we incurred and some of the challenges that we have coming. I would love to stand here and tell you that we have everything figured out at this point, but we don't. We're still fluid. My wife asked me last night if we were on Plan E or F or where we were, and I said it feels more like F 973.6 or something. I don't know where we are, but. We'll start with Mark Twain. I think most of you have probably seen the footage. Mark Twain's cafeteria roof is gone, and a majority of that is inside the cafeteria, but the whole roof structure is gone, not just the decking, like the entire support structures. So yesterday, we had Archer Elgin, our team of architects and engineers that we work with out of the St. Louis area, all in to evaluate the structural stability of that. Happy to report that with some exception, for the most part, that seems to be the only damage to the building. So we have a little bit of pressure around those classrooms immediately adjacent to that cafeteria area, but we think we can continue operating in Mark Twain. The biggest challenge will be delivering food and serving food to those approximately 300 and some kids to finish the school year. So that's the process we're working on now, and we will have some demo happening in there pretty quickly because it's not safe. So we'll be actually hoping to start that tomorrow, getting some demo done and reevaluating that structural piece once that is completed. Rala Middle School, we were in that facility when the storm hit, enjoying a wonderful drama production of Chicago, and we evacuated to the hallways. The main issue there is that area around the auditorium, the ceiling, I'm sorry, the ceiling, the roof was peeled back, including the rooftop units. Everywhere there was a rooftop unit, there's now a three-by-three hole, so we have all these wonderful skylights. And I say skylights because they go straight from standing in the classroom, you can see open sky. We lost, at this point, we know that we have lost 17 of those units. There are about 83 on that building, 70 some of which we just placed this summer, including the 17 that were lost. So that piece in and of itself is problematic, but the rain damage that ensued from those units being removed, most of those classrooms are in pretty bad shape. We are still without power at that building, which has kind of impacted our ability to clean up and really get in there and assess further. As we were going through yesterday, we discovered four additional rooms on the other end of the building where the units were either moved, displaced in some form or fashion, also additional flooding, that kind of thing. So as the power comes on, as we have things, we're undoubtedly going to see other things. I will describe, you know, they always talk about amazing things that you see. These are all gas units, so there's gas lines and trunk lines, they're fed off of stems is what I would call them, but they're threaded pipe. And so we know, we have one unit where quite literally the gas line is still there, it's not moved, it's still anchored, but the unit was unscrewed from the pipe. So if that tells you anything about what was going on up there, it was probably a little wild. All of those units are still on the roof, so our first order of business is getting those off so we can further assess the damage. We are in the process, we'll begin the process tomorrow of vacating those particular rooms. There's about 15 classrooms that we're going to have to vacate. We're going to look to relocate that mostly fifth grade to another facility. So we're still working on those plans and hope to have some finalization tomorrow on outlining what that looks like. In the meantime, we again are blessed that we can continue operating in the rest of that building. The other piece that we have to figure out, though, is all of those gas lines are connected in a loop, which also feeds the kitchen. So we've got to figure out how to get gas service to the kitchen so we can fire that back up when the kids get back. So that's our issues at Rala Middle School. Wyman, we were hopeful upon initial inspection that we were going to be able to continue using that building. There's been some substantial damage to the roof structure there. Basically, kind of peeled the roof back and rolled it like a burrito. In that process, there's a rooftop gas line that was pushed off the building that broke. We were able to find that Friday night and shut that off. But again, several classrooms were open to open sky, substantial water damage, lots of materials and technology things that were destroyed in that process. Upon structural inspection yesterday, that roof structure has actually been lifted throughout that whole segment of the building. And so basically, what's safe to occupy at this point in Wyman would be the new addition, the last addition that has the gymnasium on the end, which would cut us down to about seven classrooms. We can't function in that building with seven classrooms. So Wyman will be closed for the remainder of the year, and we are very blessed to have recently purchased a facility to expand our early childhood program. So we are in the process of figuring out really quickly how we can convert that collegiate building to an elementary school. So that process will be going, there will be some other pieces of that. We will have to peel probably early childhood classes out and send them to a different location. We're still finalizing some things there, so. But know that Wyman ultimately is the building that is actually the hardest hit. That whole decking system is going to have to be peeled down to the decking removed completely and replaced, so that's a major project. On top of that, we have obviously lots of trees and those kind of things. Central Office, RTC sustained some minor damage, mostly from debris. So soffits, trim work, some of those things where debris hit those in the process of the storm. We are still without power in some of those places. I know RMU is working diligently. Not having power at Central Office, that's our hub for our entire network. So even the buildings that have power can't function because they have no network abilities. We can't print, we can't copy, we can't do all of those things because everything is tied together. So we're kind of stuck in that regard. We will continue working on that. I know RMU is doing everything they can, but middle school, RTI, and Central Office are still without power. Additionally, just some other smaller things, the softball field is gone. Essentially, the press box area was damaged, took out the backstop, all the bleachers went away, those kind of things. So thankfully, it's not softball season, but that'll be a project to deal with as well. Again, kind of a random moment, as we were inspecting things late Friday night, of course, it's dark, the emergency lighting that we have, the battery power packs last for about two hours and then they fade. But there was one laying in the front lawn at the middle school, right by the front door, that was shining like a floodlight in that darkness. And in that moment, we all just kind of thought, well, it's one off the building, power pole or something. But what we discovered in the morning of Saturday morning was that it was actually from the inside of the cafeteria at Mark Twain. That was an interior light that was installed in our lighting project, so if that gives you an idea of some of the things that are happening there. We have great people, and we're taking it one step at a time. We have the full staff coming in tomorrow to start taking some first steps of packing rooms and getting things relocated, so. Our goal and what we're pushing for is to reopen schools on March 31st. It's about two weeks away, but that's our goal. That's what we're pushing for. Happy to answer questions if I can.
Was there any damage to the junior high? I saw some inspectors.
So we have some continued inspections to happen. At this point, we're not aware of anything major. We do believe there's probably some chance that some of those HVAC units on the roof have some at least minor damage, but that building is, has power and everything is functioning. So that's not been our focus at this point, but we will actually take those inspectors through all of those buildings with a fine-tooth comb as time allows.
Dr. Dare, do you need anything from any of the institutions in Rala?
You know, at this point, I don't know what that would be right now, but I'm sure we will, and if we have the ability, we know we can ask, yes. We appreciate that. Sorry.
Dr. Dare, hold on.
No, yeah.
I'd be remiss if I didn't ask because my daughter will tell me, or will say, hey, Dad, did you find out? Is it going to extend the school year?
So we are actually blessed in two ways. So the short answer is no. We build what we call a max calendar, so we build in to our calendar what is automatically required from the state to make up weather days. So in that regard, we will never make up weather days at this point. There was some question about whether tornado days means the tornado day or the following days after, but we do believe Dussie's going to forgive those anyway, so I think we're covered either way.
I'll let her know.
At this point, the calendar stands. Spring break stands, last day of school stands, all those things will be the same.
Dr. Dare, is the high school look okay?
High school, as far as we know, had no damage at all. Yeah, Truman is fine, no issues there. RTI, as far as we know, is fine, they're just without power. Again, subject to change at a moment's notice. As the power comes back on, we may find things, so. Okay, I think Gina wants to mention some things about volunteering and that kind of thing here, or do you want me to?
Hi, everyone, thanks for having us. Just want to echo Dr. Dare's sentiment and thank everyone who's reached out and shown up to help. We've had so many volunteers and offers, it's kind of been overwhelming. Thank you to local law enforcement, city officials, our board. I know everyone's pitched in and has been working really hard, so thank you all. If you do want to help, we put out a form this afternoon. It's on our website, on our social media pages. Please fill out that form. That way, we have a centralized volunteer pool, and we have a team assembled that will be calling on those folks as we need them. So again, that's on our website and on our Facebook page. If you can't find it, call me, and we'll point you in the right direction. But we're just asking that everyone fill out that form so that we have a resource list to build as a bank as we move forward, because we will need people, but it's been tough to get folks in right off the bat with some of the conditions we've been facing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From the city's perspective, the last couple of days have been extremely busy. The focus by city staff, and when I say city staff, I include Rala Municipal Utilities, was very much focused on people's safety, number one, and property, number two. Number three was electrifying our services and getting power back on to everybody as fast as possible. That's been the focus. I've been very fortunate to see firsthand how our, all of our staff has worked, and it is truly amazing. You know, sometimes those of us that sit here, we kind of shrug and say, geez, do we, what do we think of ourselves as elected officials? But I got to tell you, this is a moment when I think everyone up here is extremely, extremely proud of not only every single employee in the city of Rala, but even much more broadly in terms of the community. I mean, we've had such an outpouring of neighbors helping neighbors, almost immediately, students from S and T and otherwise, just pouring out and volunteering. And you know, I look at Amy and I think of REC and economic development, and we go through a lot of efforts to promote this concept of quality of life. And you know, quality of life is not just shopping, folks. It's all these intangibles that make people really want to live here and really want to stay here. We have a great community, and as the days go on, we're going to see more and more of that. As John said earlier, we're a little bit in a honeymoon period. We've got a lot of resources that are addressing things very specifically, but we have to remember that our citizens, and some of them are going to be suffering for a long time, weeks and months. So the efforts that we have by volunteerism is going to have to continue, and please, let's keep them in mind. For city council, we have a workshop. The public is absolutely welcome to the workshop on Wednesday, as is the media RD. At that point, we want to do a couple of things. We want to give a little bit more of an update on where we are with all aspects of the city. And as we move into the quote-unquote cleanup phase, where can people take this? Where can they drop off this? Who do they call? We're assembling all of those answers for city council, so we want you to be prepared, and frankly, we need your help as well to get these comments and this information into the various citizens that are in your ward. So the public is welcome at 5:30 on Wednesday.
Is that here, Mayor?
That's here. Bring your questions. We're going to try and get as many of the questions and answers identified and answered upfront, but we're going to miss some, so feel free to bring your questions. So I don't want to get really deep. I asked John to just hit four or five high-level things here tonight, because if we get too deep, then we're going to be acting as if this is Wednesday. So John's going to give us a highlight, a couple of areas. John?
Thanks, Mayor. I pass these around to this side. Would you pass? This is just a draft of a summary of what we're doing, and I'm not going to go over all this tonight. Particularly, I'm going to just hit the opening paragraph and then back on page three. Let me just read this opening paragraph because I think we're accustomed to what's happened since Friday night, but I'm not sure that everyone has seen the official releases. So between 7:50 and 7:58 PM, an EF2 tornado crossed the city of Rala from Highway CC in a northeasterly direction to the industrial park on the northwest. Peak winds hit 120 miles an hour and the path length was 8.67 miles. Maximum width of the tornado was 175 yards. Early SEMA estimates are 750 to 800 damaged structures in Rala with another 200 to 300 in Phelps County, and these are all very preliminary in order to get the information up to the governor's office. RMU encountered nearly 80% of our metered customers, that should be of our 10,000 metered customers, so about 80% were out Friday night. By the next morning, they were down to about 5,000 customers out. As of about 10 minutes ago, they got a bunch on this evening, which is why Rodney's not here, he apologizes, and Chad, they said, we can either get more people hooked up or come to the meeting. I said, get more people hooked up, so. So we should have down to about 3,000 folks without power as of tomorrow, but we want to make sure that people understand, the folks that were in the direct line of the hit, we estimate about 1,600 or so customers, they could be out for another week or two. It's going to take a total reconstruction of those areas before they can really get in there. As the mayor said, the response from Rala citizens has been nothing short of incredible, and that coupled with region-wide responses from SEMA, Red Cross, Salvation Army, Phelps County EMD, Pulaski County EMD, and too many other entities to recognize as well as the citizens, it's just been humbling. So again, take a look at the department by department summaries. We'll talk about that on Wednesday. If you see some things on there, some If you see some things on there, some questions on there, shoot us some emails in preparation, or we'll be prepared with department directors to answer and have some of that ongoing conversation. I wanted to bring your attention to page three, and it's some ongoing communication efforts. We're currently working with Forward Slash to create a dedicated website. It's going to be called resilientrolla@rollacity-- I'm sorry, resilientrolla.com. We'll create a segregated email account, resilientrolla@rollacity.org. And currently, we're going to be handling phone numbers, or phone calls, through Lori's office. She's very confident she can handle this by herself, but we're prepared to roll out another number. There would be a backup number, and we'll put together a team as we need to, but that'll all be announced in this new website, where we'll have the Q and A's, we'll have the maps. It'll be the city's go-to site for these questions, and so we're going to need your help to backfill that with a lot of Q and A questions, and then we'll backfill with the information on the answers.
Repeat that.
Yeah, it hasn't been released, but the website will be, again, resilientrolla.com, link to offer the city's website, the email address for ongoing communications, resilientrolla@rollacity.org, and those will both be released officially tomorrow. Very end, key resources. I just want to need a shout-out for some really key institutions and then efforts. The emergency sheltered opened on Friday nights. It was amazing to see the First Baptist Church gym, which we've had an arrangement with for a long time, with a generator placed there, opened. Red Cross was able to take charge of that, and they have been having anywhere from four to, I think we had seven folks staying there last night. The mobile food canteen, clothing and toys, Salvation Army, he's been with us since the very beginning. Rolla emergency management efforts, Chief Jeff Breen and firefighter Brad Woods have been leading that with sort of an incredible team surrounding them as well. Shower locations are at S&amp;T Gale-Bulman. Those are going to be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM until-- and then to be determined if, as we go forward, whether that needs to be continued, because we just opened the shower facility also at the First Baptist Church, being hosted by the Southern Baptist Disaster Relief, and there's shower capability, including ADA access at that location. We should have the center on by the next day or so, and we want to make that available for a place for the community can go and take showers, and we'll work out some arrangements so folks can get in there and just play and let the kids burn off some of this energy. And then lastly, volunteer support. While it's been all over the community, it's been incredible. We do really want to track that, both as a place for people to contact and say, we need support and help on my properties, to where these groups can come and ask, where can I be commissioned? That's really being coordinated by the Pulaski County EMD, and so they're running from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They'll be there all this week, and that's just a good clearinghouse of that information. Doesn't mean there's not a lot of other things going on, but we're trying to really run everything through that resource. So a lot more key resources that are out there. We've got a little pamphlet that got prepared as of yesterday. These are being taken door-to-door to houses that were directly impacted with some of that basic information of where they can go, and this will be updated periodically, and new copies produced. And of course, that website will be able to be updated. So again, happy to answer any questions, but a much deeper dive on Wednesday.
John, will the meeting on Wednesday be livestreamed? Will they be able to watch it?
You know, we haven't made arrangements to do that. We're not opposed to it. We got to just check with the operator and see if that's something we can do.
Okay. I thought I'd ask.
Yeah. Typically, when we do workshops, it's really a chance to get into the nitty-gritty, but there's no reason that we want people to know this information. The thought was, we might resolve it all there, address some issues that we've got, and then be able to publish that, release that.
Got it.
So we'll check on whether or not that can be aired Wednesday.
Thank you.
John, I just-- a lot of the questions that I got over the last couple of days, I just want to reiterate that on the second page, the first full paragraph, that the transfer station is overwhelmed, so we're looking at-- they won't be able to handle the full volume of debris and demolition. Are we suggesting that we can take it directly to Prairie Valley Landfill in Cuba?
So larger supplies, for sure. Dump trucks, things like that can make that haul.
I was going to say, help out with that a little bit. They are overwhelmed, but they do have extra trucks out there, and they were prepared best they could to get that stuff moving, to keep it moving. But obviously, when you got all the city comment and several, several dump trucks, fills up their trucks real fast, so they got to move them out. But I talked to the manager down there today, because we had some issues, and I think he's going to resolve that, or he says he will. Nobody should be turned away from transfer. I know we had some issues today, but I think he's going to take care of that.
Okay.
So we'll see how that goes tomorrow.
Hold on, maybe.
Go ahead.
Is this a little bit different than what we talked about on Sunday? So we're encouraging everyone in the community to go to the transfer station. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes. Now, Lou, we are starting the extra site over here at Sharp Road, where we're going to have some people come in.
Satellite facilities, but before you get to the satellite facilities.
Oh, go ahead.
So I'm clear. We do want people to go to the transfer station.
Yes.
And that includes contractor, that includes constructing debris, that includes everything.
Yes. Now, there is always going to be the exception, some of that stuff's too big for their trailers. At that time, they will direct them to Cuba.
Okay, so I just want to make sure the public hears that part.
Yes.
So if there's a backup there, or if there's something that's too big, they will be told, we'll take it, but you have to take it to Cuba.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Why don't you talk about the satellite facilities as well?
Okay. We're going to try one for now, see how it works out. We discussed that this morning over here at Sharp Road, over by the old-- behind the Dog Pound, the old street department. We'll have three to four-- the three to four, the dumpsters sit there. We'll have people coming in. They're welcome to come in from 8:00 to 4:00, we discussed this morning. Drop off any, we don't, debris, small debris. If they got a trailer load of stuff, we're going to hand them a flyer out, a brochure, to take that to the transfer station. It's no cost to them, they bill that back to the city. They come in each time.
Roger, these satellite facilities will be staffed, right?
Yes, we'll have--
Okay, so talk about things, this is not an opportunity to take everything from spring cleaning and putting in that dumpster.
No. So our staff, we'll have one, at least one person, and if we set up another, we'll have a person there, is destruction debris, small debris, stuff like that. So you know, obviously, our person, our staff is going to look at that when you come up, and if it's a bunch of bags of clothing, obviously, I was going to say, hey, come on, that didn't come from, you know--
No solvents, no paint, no--
None of that stuff. It's just made minor storm debris, stuff like that, you know, trash that they picked up around the house from the debris blowing around, et cetera. Food, rotten food. We do have a lot of issues with rotten food. We get called, we've been getting calls all day. I've been telling them, if you can wait till tomorrow, bring it, we'll throw it in there. That's stuff like that.
Yeah. Really, we want to make sure there's kind of a distinction. So large-scale hauling should go to the transfer station, it should go to Cuba. The one that we're opening up on Sharp Road is really intended for the smaller scale, pickup trucks, small trailers--
Yeah.
--where people can actually, you have to load that into commercial dumpsters. So it's not going to be a place that you're just dumping on the ground.
Yeah, we don't want dump trucks coming in there thinking they're going to dump their stuff, or dump trailers full of stuff like that.
So it's hands-unloading?
Yes.
Into a dumpster, okay.
Yes, correctly. Josh did--
And then, so for all of the debris, like tree limbs, trees, all that stuff, can we leave it on the curb?
Okay, that's public works, right? Darren, you want to come up here?
Yeah, we're kind of working together on that one, so, yeah.
We're spreading the work around here a little bit. Darren, tell us about what the citizens should do.
That's one of the biggest questions.
Yes, so any tree debris, if you can get that to the edge of the curb. I've had staff in, you know, Saturday, Sunday, today, going around with backhoes, dump trucks, cleaning that stuff up. I mean, we're going to work all the way through town, and then probably work all the way through town again, so.
How many days do you think you'll do that at a minimum?
Three weeks.
Three weeks, okay. Talk about the sizing of material.
Be honest with you, the bigger the better. So we'd much rather see eight- and 10-foot pieces as opposed to, you know, 16-inch pieces. It's just a lot quicker to load, you know, drag the limbs out, get that stuff out, and we'll get it picked up.
Thank you.
Just remember, they're using bigger equipment to do that. I saw them out there all day today around town. They did a tremendous job. Because they got bigger equipment to do it, so like Darren said, the bigger the pieces are.
And so right now, I mean, we're not picking up any construction debris, so you know, shingles is blown off or anything like that. We're not picking any of that right now, because we got to keep that stuff separate. We can't mix the tree debris with the construction debris.
Correct. So I just, maybe there was a misunderstanding with some of the constituents. So we're working for three weeks straight, we're going to be doing this for three weeks. We're just picking it up, and then we're picking it up, and picking it up again, so, okay. So we're not waiting three weeks.
No.
It's every day for the next three weeks.
We will be continuous operation for probably at least three weeks.
Okay.
Maybe longer.
Thank you.
And for folks, again, that are able to haul themselves on trailers and pickups, they're welcome to go to the compost site. It's getting full. We've got a backup redundant facility that'll be right by the recycling center, and then on Oak Lane, that we're using, we're kind of limiting to our access at this point.
So we announced today at 3:00, we're going to open that up tomorrow for the public.
Okay, thank you. And then top grinder coming out within a week or 10 days, we think?
Yeah, later this week, early next week, you'll be here.
Okay. When that's here, and that's going to take them a while to grind, we're going to have to close down McCutcheon, we'll move everything out to Oak Lane.
We would definitely have to close that site during the grinding time. There's just not enough room there for that, and tater, and stuff flying around.
Roger, real quick, I just had a constituent call me today and ask me, she's an older person, and she has fence panels laying in her front yard. Will anyone ever come get it, or does she need to find someone to haul it?
Yeah, we're working on dealing with all the debris stuff. We haven't gotten final details on that.
Okay. So tell her to hang tight.
We are still doing spring cleanup. We'll get to that in a minute.
Gotcha. Yeah. We're still encouraging folks to put those kind of piles out of the curb. We'll kind of figure out, separate from the land, the tree limbs, but that's all yard construction trash.
Everything will get done, but everything won't get done at the same time.
That's right. Hurry up and wait.
I do have a question then, because I'm kind of concerned about this, but a lot of those panels and stuff are getting stacked on the sidewalk. Is that an issue? Do they need to be in the yard, behind the sidewalk?
They should, but we're not going to ask somebody who's just hauling it out there. We're just, we'll just try and get it removed as quickly as--
So that's just-- Tell everybody not to put on the sidewalk, and then the onesies and twosies that happen, it's okay.
Right. That's why I just want to get that word out, too, so, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you both.
Thank you, gentlemen.
If you can, bring all your questions. As I said, the public is welcome to attend as well on Wednesday. Thank you. All business, we have quite a number of things here from last week, two weeks ago, versus an ordinance to approve the vacation of an easement at 1527 St. Maria's.
Okay, yes, I'm going to be pretty quick since the second reading, but basically, there's an easement on a lot in the St. Maria's Tetandra property. Planned building is in the location of the easement. Easement's not needed anymore. This ordinance also includes a replacement easement for where the utility of that easement was intended for ended up getting built. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance approving the vacation of an easement located at 1527 St. Maria's Street.
Trevor will make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Pond?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ridley?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Levin Ice?
Thank you. Second item is an ordinance rezoning 602 North Olive.
All right. Yeah, so this is a property on Olive Street between Sixth and Seventh. Got the property on there. The property is currently zoned C1, which is neighborhood commercial. The entire block is zoned C1 and C2. The blocks around the property are zoned various commercial districts, but then a little bit further out, you start seeing some residential zoning. This area is kind of on the edge of the downtown, kind of between the really downtown area and where it becomes more residential. So the reality is, it's got kind of a mixture of commercial and residential uses. This map I just brought up are properties that were until recently and are currently residential uses. And so you can see, it's almost kind of about 50/50, almost. This is a street view looking toward the property. It's not the one forefront and center, that the former church is this one over here, kind of behind the trees. But basically, that property is currently a duplex. It's old. The applicant stated that it is in disrepair and needs to be demolished and something replaced. So their request is to rezone this property to the R4 district, that was one of our new zoning districts. That would allow for, I think it'd allow for up to something like a six or eightplex, maybe, and I've kind of laid out, that'd be about the maximum we can do and fit the parking and all that for it. Don't know what exactly the applicant has planned, but they want to try to do more than duplex on the property if they can. As I said, this property is kind of in a strange location. The current comprehensive plan designates it being appropriate for commercial uses, however, it is adjacent to the downtown. There's a mix of residential and commercial in this area. The R4 district is intended for areas that are near the downtown for higher-density residential and mixed use with a limited amount of commercial uses in that district. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, voted four to zero. Too many questions for me?
Some questions for Tom? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance to approve the rezoning of property located at 602 North Olive Street from the C1 neighborhood commercial district to the R4 urban multifamily district.
Kessinger will make a motion.
Hon will second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Roman?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Levin?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Ridley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Pond?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Levin Ice?
This is approved. Next item is an ordinance vacating the remainder of an alley north of 11th Street.
All right, so this was a planted alley that's north of 11th Street between Highway 63 or Bishop and what used to be State Street. and what used to be State Street. It's on property that's completely adjacent to the university, and the university is actually the applicant on this one. I know I've had some recent cases where the city was the applicant on these. But just the short version is, there's no alley there anymore. The alley is not needed for any access. University's planning a building, and so they need this vacation in order to pursue a grant for that building. There are some utilities, issues to be worked out as they get there, and we may be back to vacate the utilities, really to those utilities, once that is worked out. But this time, they need it to be vacated so they have the property, so they can apply for a grant. Do you have any questions for me? Planning and zoning did recommend approval?
I don't think we have any questions.
Any other questions? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance approving the vacation of the remainder of an alley in Townsend addition to the city of Rolla, generally located north of 11th Street between Bishop Avenue and the former rights-of-way of State Street.
I'll make that motion.
Josh will second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Fridley?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Cutter?
Yes.
Bulch?
Abstain.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Tenice?
Ordinance is approved. Next item is an ordinance to approve the enhanced enterprise zone.
Yeah, we're 15 years into the 25-year DED designated enhanced enterprise zone for the city of Rolla. That provides a tax abatement methodology for certain types of industry and investment, but one of those that were adopted 15 years ago included accommodations. So traditionally, these were used for manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, utility offices, that kind of thing. But at the time, the Enhanced Enterprise Zone Board and the City Council was supportive of encouraging hotel development that would sort of lead to more conference and convention center opportunities. So this is only our third utilization of the EEZ. Over the first 15 years of this process, that was Hartman and then one other hotel property. This is the Home to Suites by Hilton. We kind of reviewed a little bit over the qualifying factors, but under our program that was adopted, the resolution adopted, they would qualify for 60% tax abatement for a 10-year period of time based on the amount of their investment, over 15 employees, and the average wage compared to county wages. We had a public hearing, there was no input, and we're asking for a final reading of the ordinance that would approve the Enhanced Enterprise Zone agreement with Presa Hotels that lays out the, really, the stipulations if they fail to meet their employment criteria or go bankrupt or something along the line, then there's a reversionary language in the agreement. So be happy to answer any questions about this project.
Any questions for Tom?
So just curiosity, you said 25 years, we're 15 years in.
Yes.
So is that, was there an agreement that we had to reassess, or I'm just curious why we're--
No. So the state designation of enhanced enterprise zone was for a 25-year term. The question's going to be, is Missouri going to reauthorize the legislature, extend or reauthorize the EEZ? I'm not hearing any of that conversation. There's 10 years left of that. Typically, four or five years prior to its expiration, you sort of hear that in the legislature, why they want to continue it. So I'm not sure that this will continue. Anybody that comes forward now, after this month, let's say somebody comes forward in five years under this program, they'll be limited to the last five years. So it will cap out at a 25-year term.
Got you. Thank you.
I could say, having been at DED, EEZs are less fashionable than they used to be.
Okay.
If I could change ours, I would change ours tomorrow. I think ours is in some ways a little more lucrative than it has to be in some cases. There's no further questions? Final reading?
An ordinance approving an enhanced enterprise zone project and authorizing the city of Rolla, Missouri to enter into an enhanced enterprise zone agreement with Presa Hotel LLC.
I'll make that motion.
Josh will second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Steen?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.